Let's call the February meeting to order. If you would, please rise, we'll be led in prayer by Pastor Darrell Cobb, and then we'll have a pledge to the flag.
Certainly is an honor for me, as a retired Lutheran pastor, to open this meeting with a prayer. Let us pray. Oh Lord, our God, you are a God of order and justice, and you are so pleased when people govern, and are governed according to your will. And so we humbly ask you, in the name of our Lord Jesus, to bless this city of Russville, and all of its inhabitants. Give your guidance to all who are in authority. Keep them mindful of their sacred trust in their public office. Grant them wisdom for their difficult tasks. Provide them with a sense of honesty and decency, a spirit of humility and service, and a sensitivity to the needs of all the folks that reside here. Give to all who live here a grateful heart, for the advantages that we enjoy, a ready obedience to our laws, a profound concern for the rights and privileges of every citizen. And Lord, protect our city from all calamities of fire, wind, water, or drought, and from all disease. And don't let our city officials be tempted to stray from your good and gracious will. Tonight, we also, as we have so many involved in our educational institutions of our city, we ask for your special care and provision for all those who learn, and those who teach. Guide them also with patience, and kindness, wisdom, and understanding from above. Lord, we ask all these petitions to you, Lord, in your son's name, even Jesus the Lord our Christ, and all as people can say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Stuber?
Here.
Mr. Tripp?
Here.
Mr. Richard Harris?
Here.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Eaton?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Westcott?
Here.
All is present.
We have a quorum. Council, if you'll allow me to depart from the agenda just a little bit, I want to recognize the leadership of Russville class. They came over today for their annual visit. We had a great time. I think they enjoyed visiting with the department heads and learning more about your city government. Leadership, would y'all stand, please? Thank you, and we won't be offended. I know a lot of y'all were thinking the meeting started at 5:30, and you've got things to do, so we won't be the least bit offended. I see a lot of faces around here from Arkansas Tech University. I'm going to put all of you on the spot. Please stand up and let us recognize you. President Bowen?
Thank you. Thank all of you.
Council, your packet contained the minutes from our meetings January 21st and 29th. If there's no corrections or questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
We have a motion. We're looking for a second on the minutes. Second, Mr. Westcott, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. McCoyne, finance report.
Finance report for January. Revenues in general fund was $998,463. Three, it's supposed to be 3.81 percent below our projections. Sales tax receipt was $748,487. Franchise fees and permits was $146,463. Total expenditures in the general fund, $1,273,023, 22 percent above our year-to-date projections. We received $274,561, more expended than received this month. Street fund operations, $167,870, 3.5 percent above our projections. Sales tax receipts were $281,348. The new half-cent sales tax, $44,00813. Street expenditures were $160,381, that's 3.53 percent above their projections. Sales tax improvements was $27,967, and capital, we spent $218. Economic development, $61,681 for January, $52,276 the new sales tax, $6,473 annual land lease, and $2,0932 in interest. Expenditures were $67,198 for city parks. Revenues for capital, $726,982, $323,000 for new sales tax, $400,000 transferred from the general fund, $3,868 from interest. Expenditures were $251,000, $25,184 for City Corp, animal, fire, parks, and airport. That's the report. Last year, if you remember, we rolled over $740,000, which, the way that happens is that our income comes at the end of the month, instead of in the first of the month, from the state sales tax. So we got all our sales tax money right at the end, so that rolled over, which we can't use in our budget. But you all did take that money and put it into a fund for a fire truck building and cemetery, which leaves a balance of $344,000 in rollover at this time.
Great. Any questions for Mr. McCoyne? Thank you, Jerry. Mayor's report, our tradition is to do our State of the City address in February. Being an optimist, I'm just going to talk about the high points, and that helped me to get it down. My goal was to get this to under two hours, and I almost made it, so bear with me. You guys relax, it's not near that long. After a successful and productive 2015, the city of Russville is properly positioned to experience levels of success and achievement that will be limited only by our collective resolve to work in cooperation with all parties capable and willing to help us all to reach our mutual goals. Operations for your city government were mostly routine in 2015, with a few notable highlights. Our longtime airport manager Bobby Day retired in March, and was replaced by Keith Frazier. Mr. Frazier, in his first year, had to deal with the process of updating the airport master plan, construction of a 400-foot runway extension, which was completed on schedule and on budget, replacing retiring and departing staff members. And in October, he had to deal with a devastating accident that claimed the lives of four beloved members of our area communities. But fuel sales rose 11.21 percent year-over-year. A new aviation-related business shows, precision applicators, chose our city to locate their base of operations, and numerous other improvements to the facilities were completed. A new 1,200-square-foot building addition was commenced and completed at Russville Animal Shelter, and is now in use. The new addition allows better separation of cats from dogs, and also sick animals can now be separated from the general population. Your animal shelter only euthanizes animals that are too sick or too injured to be likely candidates for adoption. In 2015, the number of dogs euthanized was approximately 25 percent of the total number of intakes. That's a good number for a shelter that's required to take any animal, whatever condition it's in. Russville's Community Development Department had a very busy year in 2015. While total inspections were down a little more than 30 percent, there were actually 10 percent more new construction projects. Estimated cost of construction projects increased 16 percent to nearly $39 million for the year. New projects currently underway and expected for 2016 include multiple hotels and restaurants, our municipal projects, and others that will require many man-hours of inspection time. The city council approved adding an additional inspector for the building official, and that position has been filled by promotion of an in-house employee, C.B. Trimble. Also under the Community Development Department is the Code Enforcement Office. The council has also approved an additional employee for the ever-increasing workload in this office, and that position is filled. Part of that additional workload for the code office is enforcing the nuisance odor ordinance that the council passed in July of 2015, that provides remedies for industries or others that repeatedly cause offensive odors in your city. This issue has plagued the city of Russville for many years, and my congratulations to this council and to the city attorney for establishing ordinance 2000-206 to deal with that. Russell Fire Department responded to over 2,100 fire and other emergencies, and conducted 16,000 hours of instruction in firefighting operations, emergency medical services, technical rescue, and hazardous materials response. On top of these daily responsibilities, a six-month-long mold remediation remodel project at Station 3 on North Arkansas Avenue was commenced and completed. By coordinating between the fire department, community developments, building maintenance personnel, public works, and local service providers, the project was completed under budget. Jackson-Brown and Paculik architects were selected to design the new central fire station, approved by voters in the current sales tax. Plans are almost complete, and this project should go to bid in early March. Parks and Recreation Department operated at their usual busy pace in 2015. The department's 14 full-time and 15 part-time and seasonal workers maintained your city's 23 parks, covering nearly 800 acres, and conducted the gamut of programs from fishing derbies to the Christmas parade. Construction began on Veterans Memorial Park. In May, Illinois Bio-North Trail at Orbit Lane was opened, and the 10-mile Awita Coal Company Mountain Bike Trail was dedicated. Russville was approved for a grant of $230,050 for lighting three full-size soccer fields. In 2016, the Parks Department will continue construction at Veterans Park and on the Phoenix Avenue trailhead to Bonadilla, and another connection from Bonadilla to the West Parkway Drive area. The big goal is to start construction of the Russville Aquatic Center. To that end, the first bid notification was advertised last weekend. Bid opening is scheduled for March the 8th, and construction is scheduled to begin in early to mid-April. The remodel of the Depot Park area is underway, and progress is made daily, taking advantage of the great building weather that we've had this winter. It's not in my notes, but we're actually getting calls from people already wanting to reserve that stage over. It's going to be a really nice facility. Police Department operations were, as anticipated, extremely busy. On top of a consistently demanding handling of 30,436 calls for service, the department also conducted 11,692 hours of training. Participants in this training included members from new hires to the command staff. The department trained in 2015 to address the issues that police are being confronted with in the media and social media, to include dealing with children, terrorism, dealing with the mentally challenged, and other areas required to address the ever-changing issues of our community. As Chief Jeff Humphrey stated, he believes that they have established that the department is willing to train and has the commitment to educate our officers about the issues the department and the community see as important. Your Public Works Department completed 10 construction projects, including the very popular sidewalk project on Arkansas Avenue, the downtown curb repair, groundwork and concrete work at Fire Station 3, and other drainage and street construction. By now, most of you have seen the progress at the Flagpole Island downtown. Once plantings are installed, this project will add tremendously to the appearance of downtown Russville. Six miles of city streets were overlaid in 2015. Low oil prices are generating substantial price drops in the cost of asphalt. These better rates for materials will allow the department to overlay and repair even more of your streets in 2016. An assessment of streets was completed last year and will be the basis for the 2016 overlay program. Public Works crews completed 959 work orders totaling 11,181 man-hours of production for your city infrastructure. With the retirement of longtime city planner David Harris, planning department duties were placed under the Public Works Department. Utilizing a contract-for-services arrangement with Garver Engineers in Little Rock, city engineer Kirk Jones, and planning admin Laquita Jones, planning issues are being efficiently managed to promote a healthy atmosphere for development in the city of Russville. In 2015, the city council approved a contract with Garver to update the comprehensive development plan to create a streamlined and forward-looking plan to guide the anticipated growth of the city for the future. Last week, the first of a series of meetings was held to set the groundwork for the process of this critical update. The overall series of meetings will allow ample opportunities for public input, and that input is encouraged from all parties, as it is essential in developing an effective, long-range plan for how you wish for the city of Russville to grow. The successes of the last year and the promise for the future is due in largest part to the day-to-day efforts of our many dedicated employees. Your city has a stable, committed workforce. At the end of 2014, much discussion was held about providing a cost-of-living raise for that workforce that had been unattainable in previous budgets. The council committed to put in the workers' force first in the 2016 budget, and managed to provide a 3 percent cost-of-living raise to all city employees without sacrificing our ability to provide the services we are charged with. Since that raise was approved, many, many of our employees have asked me to convey a message to the council. Now, on behalf of all your city employees, thank you, thank you all very much. Those valued employees have many benefits and employment needs. After the departure of longtime Human Resources Director Tracy Klein-Pew, the council quickly filled the open position with the hiring of Ms. Tinesse Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn came to the city administration with knowledge, experience, and training, and immediately took charge of administering the needs and requirements of our workforce. Welcome to the family, Ms. Vaughn. We all look forward to working with you for many years to come. Would you stand up, Ms. Vaughn? That's an abbreviated snapshot of the current state of affairs for municipal government operations in your city. But the state of the city involves much more. Arkansas Tech University recorded another year of record growth. This is a driver for the university to need to generate an updated strategic plan, which they are in the process of finalizing. A number of city representatives were allowed to participate in the development of their plan. Clearly, it is in the best interest of both the city and the university to coordinate the development of our future plans in cooperation and mutual support, and that effort is the current state of our relationship. Both parties have ambitious plans that will have a great positive impact on the future of our community. In order to best accomplish our respective goals, our two entities are increasingly coordinating our efforts and mutual support of each other in the community's best interest. Current relationship with city corporation cannot be better exemplified than by reviewing the experience this past spring concerning the rate increase and bond issue. City Corp officials did a great job of assessing and assembling the facts and presenting the facts for the needs of our system. Council did their duty in analyzing that information, and in the end, necessary actions were taken to ensure that we make the recommended repairs and upgrades to our utility, so that we don't end up facing the challenges of Fort Smith, or Flint, Michigan. I can go on for another couple of hours about the positive current state of affairs in the city of Russville, Arkansas. I can tell you stories about the volume of endeavors that many, many volunteer organizations and church groups are supporting and growing areas of our community. I can talk about very encouraging meetings that are now happening on a regular basis in our town that indicate some exciting growth that is coming our way. We could further discuss the progress being made in every corner of our place and time in history. This will probably be a good opportunity to brag about City Corp's water being judged as the best tasting in the region, and about the recent recognition by zipia.com that Russville is the best city in Arkansas for work-life balance. I could brag about our Advertising and Promotion Commission receiving a City of Distinction Award for the outstanding success of the Russ-Vegas Half Marathon, and all the other fantastic things that that group is bringing for our city, and there are dozens of others. Rest assured that those disclosures will be shared with the city as soon as the proper time arrives. Until that time, also be assured that we are approaching a time when opportunities abound for those with the boldness, the vision, and an optimistic attitude to take advantage of the near-term future the city of Russville offers. I'm the mayor of Russville, and that, as I see it, is the state of the city of Russville at this time. Thank you very much. Speaking of city employees, Police Chief Jeff Humphrey, if you'll come to the podium, I believe you have an important award to talk about.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wiley, you're our liaison, I'd like for you to participate in this. I'm going to present the 2015 Officer of the Year Award. I need Detective Quinn Jones to come to the front, please. This award is given to an officer who has exhibited excellence through special accomplishment or daily commitment to the mission and values of the department. This commitment is typically exhibited through the officer's outstanding work product, attention to detail, exemplary treatment of the public, and cooperative attitude with coworkers. Officers who demonstrate outstanding skill, ability, and professionalism in the performance of his or her duties during the past year are eligible for this award. Officer Jones, the nomination process, during the nomination process, many officers eagerly provided input as to why you should be considered. I don't have time to list everything, but I'll give you a few. Lieutenant Spears says Jones is always willing to share the workload, make himself available to assist others, is very positive and helpful, and is recommended to be a detective, which he now is. Sergeant Daniel echoed Lieutenant Spears's assessment and added, "He continually exceeds expectations in his assignment as a new detective." P.I.O. Latch added, "Jones is always willing to volunteer to assist in community events sponsored by the police department." And finally, Captain Ewing said, "Jones is quickly to give accolades to other officers who assist with the detective's cases. He is a team player and puts humility above self-recognition." Officer Jones, you are highly respected by your peers and supervisors alike. It is your everyday work ethic and commitment to the community, commitment to community service, that has earned you the honor of this year's Officer of the Year Award. Congratulations.
Thank you, Gene. I was told before the meeting he didn't know his family was going to be here, and all of his fellow officers. Good thing. I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Chris Hausnick. He has a special program he wanted to make an announcement about for veterans and others.
Either one.
Who?
Thank you, Mayor and city council, for allowing me to come up and just have a few minutes of your time. Tonight, yes, I work at Arkansas Tech, one of the communities, but today I'm here as a member of a force of martial arts and fitness. It's one of the martial arts gyms here in town, and fortunately, it's one of the fastest-growing martial arts communities here in Russville. It's been open about four years now, but its growth has been really encouraging to just over 200 members already, and they have, I call it a good problem to have, they keep outgrowing their space. Because of this growth, they are moving into a new home. They're in the process of renovating a 4,000-square-foot space near downtown Russville, 900 West E Streets, to be specific. It's been, an old construction company was there, it's been naked for, I think, a year or more. They're moving in there. But part of our gym's mission is to strengthen the Russville community. Any business, martial arts, or whatever you can imagine, is only going to be as strong as the community it serves. As part of that, our family operates several community outreach programs to help those in need. One, I think many of you, and I'm sorry, the police just left, is Russville Police Boxing. It was founded in 1997. We assumed day-to-day control over that in 2013. Last year, though, we started offering two additional programs, mixed martial arts and judo for at-risk youth and teens. We work with counseling associates here in Russville for those who are identified with those sort of challenges. And most recently, myself, I started, it's called Project Warrior Grappling, a submission wrestling program open to veterans and law enforcement, bringing in our community as well for free in those endeavors. What I'm trying to get information out for is on Saturday, April 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., we're going to have a community-wide grand opening celebration. We want to invite the community to come out, see what we are about, and try and make a difference in the greater Russville community. During this grand opening event, we're going to have several smaller things throughout the day. We will have a number of seminars, anti-bullying seminars, self-defense seminars. There will be information booths and tables, there will be boxing demonstrations, martial arts demonstrations, fitness demonstrations, and a lot of the usual family affairs, bump and jumps, things of that nature. We've got corporate sponsors all ready for food. Harvest Bank has given us a verbal commitment for hamburgers and hot dogs. Umami is putting together some kind of program for an Asian-themed box lunch. For our program, we're going to have a special session of our Project Warrior Grappling. One of our training leaders, back in the name of Danny Dring, he is out of Little Rock, he has an incredibly long history in Arkansas martial arts. He holds advanced black belts in Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, Bill Superfoot Wallace Systems, Joe Louis Kickboxing, Weeping Style Jiu-Jitsu, when he started with Tai Kwon Do years ago. And he has trained the Arkansas State Police, their SWAT teams, law enforcement, all around the central Arkansas area. He's going to do a 45-minute session for law enforcement and veterans during this opening event. What I'm here is to sort of, is to ask the community, we are seeking additional involvement from community organizations, businesses, nonprofits, churches, whomever might be interested in getting the word out, hoping to contribute. I have a flyer, if you would like one, you'll see me after the council meeting. It can be, you could come to our open house, set up information booths. If you want to give money, you know, please, by all means, we will find a way to use it. We are a registered 501(c)(3), which is always important to throw out there. But any support, whether from the community, from individuals or organizations, is much appreciated. We've already reached out a little bit to some organizations, for instance, the Russville Fraternal Order of Police, the VFW, the Marine Corps League, we've at least made contact with. We are trying to put that kind of community support into more specifics. So with that, that is all I have, Mayor, and city council.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We also have Mr. Kevin Massey from the Pope County Library. Kevin, you have something you need to announce?
Kevin, you have something you need to announce?
Hey, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know that on Saturday, March 12th, the Pope County Library Foundation is sponsoring the 5K and 10K race for...
Register C. It will start at the Russville Junior High at 8:00 a.m. You can register online or at the library. Early registration ends on February the 29th. The cost for the 5K is $20. The cost for the 10K is $25. After the 29th, you can still register, but the cost will be $5 more on each race. We don't have that many people signed up yet, so we do need a lot of people to register. And if you want to just come out and support us, we'd like that, or if you want to volunteer to help us in any way with the race, like handing out water, anything like that, that'd be great. For any more information, you can contact Tammy at the Pope County Library. Thank you.
Mr. Massey, this fundraising deal is kind of necessitated because the library suffered some cuts from their, is it federal funding or state?
It's mainly the state. Yes, we've lost a lot of money last year and this year. And so the foundation is a 501(c)(3), and so they're raising money for us to have programs and purchase books, building things that we need in the building, and stuff like that.
Good. Hopefully, everybody will come out and support the library.
I do have some forms here, if anybody's interested. Just see me after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Department of Report this month is Mr. Frazier from the airport.
Is that going to be short this week?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As the mayor mentioned at the beginning of his State of the City report, last year was a very busy time for the Russville Airport. We did show an increase in traffic, fuel cells, and we're hoping that trend continues this year. If the last two weeks are any indication, it's going to be a real good year. The biggest obstacle that the airport faces, as I see it right now, is public perception. People don't realize, Monday through Friday, that the Russville Airport is a portal of business, day in and day out. The majority of the traffic that we see out there is business-related. Most of it are established corporations and businesses in this town. Some of them are new business looking to conduct business and develop business in this town. And I think my main mission this year is going to be to raise the public awareness of what that airport is all about. And the only way I can do that is have events out at the airport that gets the public out there. So we've got some things on the board that will be occurring later in the year. We want to encourage the public to come out, certainly encourage the councils to come out and see what we're doing out there. This past year, we did participate in the balloons over Russ Vegas event. The balloons were landing on the airport. We had skydivers out there, and our very own Kurt Jones took a balloon ride, then decided to participate in the skydiving. He jumped out of a perfectly good airplane, but we won't judge him by that. Once he got past the screaming phase of it, he seemed to enjoy it. But we've got to always put our best foot forward, whether it be the airport, the Fire Department, Police Department, whatever. And I think by and large, we do that. The airport, there's some, I would call them minor beautification projects that we're going to undertake this year. In 2009, we moved into the new terminal building. It's second to none. It's a very nice facility. Just about everybody that comes through there makes a comment about it. We moved out of an old FBO building that was established there in 1961. That building needs a little bit of attention. I have made an application for grant funding for that, for materials. Hopefully, next month, we'll find out if we get the grant money or not. It's a very small amount. We're going to provide the labor and put a fresh coat of paint on the building, do some landscaping, and make what people see when they get off the plane match what they walk into in the terminal building. I think it's important that people know that we are a progressive, forward-thinking city, and we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that when they step off the plane at the airport, because for many of those people, it's the first time they've been to Russville, that's the first thing they see. We want to make sure we make the best impression that we can. As the mayor mentioned, we recently filled two vacated positions. One is our weekend attendant, and the other is our full-time nighttime attendant, does the closing in the evening. I don't think I could have found two better employees to fill those positions. They're both very customer service-oriented. You know, that's one of the things that I've kind of stressed and that I pride myself on with the airport. We're competitive with our fuel prices. You know, the planes can go anywhere to get fuel, where we're knocking the socks off of everybody's customer service. Back in December, I had a charter flight that flew into Russville, flew to Florida, spent three days in Florida, picked up one passenger, and was going to fly to Aspen, Colorado. Now, there's a lot of airports between Florida and Colorado. They landed at the Russville Airport because of our customer service, and we're going to continue that. And everywhere, anyway, and every way that we can improve on it, we're going to. We're committed to that. The employees that I have in place now are committed to it, and that's just my philosophy. Funding opportunities, as I mentioned, I have a grant now before the Russville A&amp;P Commission that they are considering for next month. I recently submitted a grant proposal to the West Central Planning Alliance for some capital improvements in equipment. Hopefully, that'll get funded. Trying to do everything that we can to reduce the financial and fiscal impact to the city. So if there's grant money out there, if I can sniff it out, you can bet I'm going to apply for it. We currently have an active grant with the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics for the 400-foot runway extension. And if I can make this work... Can you guys get a smaller screen? There it goes. I also handed out our five-year capital improvement plan. We are required to submit this to the FAA every year. It actually starts with the fiscal year 2017. Our 2016 CIP has already been submitted. Excuse me. Basically, we get airport improvement grant funds at the tune of about $150,000 a year. They allow you to bank that for up to three years. So starting in 2017, your first line there, you see $395,000. Basically, that's the 2016 grant money and the 2017, that's banked money. We also had a carryover of about $45,000. So starting in fiscal year 2017, going through the next five years of 2021, you can see what we are going to be using our federal monies for. In 2018, we plan on starting our medium-intensity runway lighting project, and that project cost is estimated at $459,000. And going down the list, starting in 2019 through 2021, we will be banking those funds again to do a runway overlay. That project, the last overlay we did was in 2013. So in 2021, the project will actually start in 2022. So that's what those federal funds will be used for. At the bottom of the page, you can see the totals. The estimated cost at $1.6 million. Entitlement is $995,000, with the additional AIP at $523,000, for a total of $168,000. Our portion of that, $1.6 million, will be $168,786. The thing about our FAA grants, they're cost-neutral to the city. We get every bit of that money back. So yeah, it's a huge investment, but we get 100% return on every dime we spend. So those are the things that we're looking at for the capital improvement plans for the FAA. There again, I try to sniff out every free dollar I can look for. I think that's part of my responsibility. I will say this, we do have some capital equipment needs, and, you know, I'm trying to find every dime that I can to make that as cost-effective for us and for the city. I think that's part of my responsibility. I think the biggest obstacle we have right now is getting the public out there. I think we're going to have some fun activities for them to come. This Saturday, from 11:00 to 3:00, after you get done with the Polar Plunge, come out to the airport, going to have a little fly-in, going to have some chili and brats. We'd like to see you all out there. Any questions?
What time?
11:00 to 3:00. Homemade chili, and I'll be grilling the brats. But again, you know, my first year here, it's been an eventful year, been a busy year. But I'm proud of what we've accomplished, and couldn't do that without the support of the mayor and this council, so I thank you.
Can I ask a question about the overlays? How often do you got to do those?
Generally, on the runway overlays, it kind of depends. We did a runway strength analysis. On any typical runway, on asphalt, you're looking at an eight-to-13-year window. You know, it depends on traffic, so hopefully, our traffic will continue. We're getting, like I say, this last week and a half, I had several large corporate jets in. I'd like to see them. They buy a lot of fuel when they're here. But the price you pay for that, the bigger the jet, the more impact it has on your runway. Like I say, the last one we did, it was in 2013, so, you know, by 2022, we're going to, it's going to be time. Any other questions?
Anything else from Mr. Frazier?
Thank you, Mayor.
Committee reports. Finance Chairman Tripp, y'all got anything?
Thank you, Mayor. We've met twice this month, once on February 9th, and then earlier tonight before this meeting. On your agenda, item number one, preparation, $25,000 for the shade structure, which is a re-proparation from 2015 for Hickey Park, field number six. This was passed by the Finance Committee, form of a motion to bring to the full council.
Okay, council, you heard the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I'm going to group two and three together. Preparations, one's a refund back for the grant that we received for the city Wi-Fi and some iPads that was purchased in 2015. And then on number three, you'll notice it says F.A., FFA, it should read FAA. Concerning the airport, those two items were, again, passed by the Finance Committee to present to the full council in form of a motion.
Council, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, number four, number five, I'm going to group these together also. These are concerning personnel, a salary issue in the street department, $293.16, $879.48. This was passed by the Finance Committee to present to the council in form of a motion.
All right, council, any discussion?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Well, I would like for us to discuss and consider the request of the employee for the full benefits, and I base my request because even his supervisor thought it was a fair thing to do. And I think, you know, it happened, and I think he's entitled to what he thought was his 13 years ago, and just, you know, so that's my, I would like to consider his full request.
Ms. Harris, are you amending my motion?
Yes, I'm amending your motion. Sorry.
Does that need a second?
Second.
Yep. You want to amend item five, do we need an exact amount in there? Jerry, do you remember?
We're going to need an exact amount. It was 3,000-something, wasn't it?
It was right at 3,300, but I don't remember exactly, so if...
We're going to vote on it, are we not? Yes, we are.
Procedurally...
Yeah, procedurally.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, can we table this until we have that properly identified, and, or should we vote on it?
I'm wondering if there's, Mr. Smith, is there a way they can, the council can vote and give us their pleasure before we go do that?
Because I do not know what that number is, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on. Mr. Nessie?
Mr. Mayor, what I would suggest is that we go ahead and pass number four for this year.
Correct.
And then correct number five for the 13 years, if that's what you want to do at the next meeting.
That'll work.
Okay.
Does Vanessa have the...
So procedurally, we've got a motion and a second on the table on item five. Can we back that up and do four separate and then do five?
Any, yes, sir.
Mayor, Vanessa, do you have, do you have that number?
That doesn't include the benefits that we've got to calculate.
Mayor, if I may, I will retract or amend my motion however it needs to be to address number four only.
Okay, let's do that.
And present that as a motion, since there is a desire to change.
Okay, clean this thing up. All right, so the motion is for item four...
From the Finance Committee to the council for passage.
All right. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right, all in favor of item four?
Aye.
All right, now on item five.
Mayor, the Finance Committee passed this in form of a motion for consideration for full council.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Now, Ms. Harris, you want to amend that. Mr. Solisic, would you settle for $3,280 and just make it a round number and get it just for your consideration, Ms. Harris?
Okay.
Will that, may I ask the question?
Yes, please.
Will that appropriately deal with it from a financial standpoint, if there is a difference in what was shown and what we, I don't guess it's any more than what we've done on number four at this point, is it?
We're kind of in, we're in no man's land here, aren't we? I mean, it's, there's, we could go none, we could go the full amount.
Right, that's, that's up to, it's up to the council. I mean, there's no legal requirement, so it's just simply whether you think, policy-wise, it's something that the council wants to do. My only contention is if you are going to offer it, it'd be contingent on early spin sign exchange for this money, if it's offered.
Say what?
A release.
A release, got it. Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to remind the council that Personnel Committee did consider this, and there's precedent, and we did agree on the three-year term, so, a three-year back pay, so just want to make sure the council is aware.
Personnel Committee...
Personnel Committee did recommend three years.
That's correct. Ms. Harris, you still want to make a motion?
Yes, I would like... Yes, I would like, uh, to consider his request for full and, but thirty-two eighty. Thirty-two eighty?
With the release that Mr. Smith?
And the release.
With the release.
No more, no moss.
Okay, so we've got a motion from Ms. Harris on item five to change that, to amend that to three thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. With a, with a release, and seconded by Mr. Wiley. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, I do. There's a memo that came out in two thousand and ten, signed by the mayor then, Williamson. And it was suspending the pay there, and he was an employee at that time. And I have questions in regards to why he did not step up then at that time and make the complaint.
But you know, when you think about the meeting, you guys have.
Well, my problem, I don't wanna open something up.
Did I hear a question, Mayor? You know, it's, it, it was kinda like Rick, Mr. Harris said, it was, uh, the personnel's decision to go back three years instead of going back to oh-two. And I'm not speaking for anyone else, but, but for, for myself, you know, even though his supervisor told him he wasn't eligible, eligible for that back in oh-two, uh, you know, I felt like over the years, he had, he had, he had ample opportunity to, to look into this further. I mean, because there's been different supervisors, different mayors, I mean, you know, there, there's been a lot of different things happen over that period and, but, but that's, that was what I kinda based my opinion on.
Okay, did I hear a question or comment on this end? Oh, Mr. McCoy.
On the thirty-two eighty, are we considering that's the total with benefits?
That's total.
So whatever I calculate backwards, that's what he gets?
If we pass that.
If you pass it, yes.
Yes, yes.
That's, that's how Ms. Harris, that's her motion.
Very good.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the amendment to change it to three thousand two hundred and eighty dollars with a release? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Harris?
No.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
No.
Sorry. Well.
Mayor gets to break the tie.
I appreciate everybody's input and respect what they said. But at the end of the day, whatever Mr. Solasi did or did not do, I don't feel like it relieves us from our duty to do the right thing. Perhaps legally, by the law, we could get away with it, but at the end of the day, we should do the right thing by our employees. I vote yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Item number six, number seven, our appropriations, one for the airport, one for the animal control. I'll group these together. The Finance Committee passes this in form of a motion to present to the full council.
All right, council, you've heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor on six and seven? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next, resolution, uh, consideration of resolution to set materials bid for the city of Russellville. This is asphalt concrete, concrete cedra, which is an annual thing that Public Works does. And this was passed by the, uh, Finance Committee in form of a motion to present to the full council.
Okay, council, you heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next, consideration of resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk treasurer to enter into an agreement for the purchase of a street sweeper for the Department of Public Works. This is just accepting the bid, author, the resolution authorizing the money has previously been appropriated. That again was passed by the Finance Committee to present to the full council.
Okay, you heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number seven, uh, from tonight's Finance Committee Agenda Consideration Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk Treasurer to enter into an agreement with Rob Caldwell for third-party architectural construction documents review of the new central fire station. That was approved by the Finance Committee to present to the full council in form of a motion.
Okay, council, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
You wanna call the roll on that, or you got it?
Seven to one.
Seven to one, motion passes.
Item number eight, consideration of the discussion ordinance to waive competitive bidding to repair the first floor AC unit for the Russellville Police Department. This was passed by the Finance Committee to present to the full council in form of a motion. But it's an ordinance, so Mr. Smith, is, do I need to suspend the rule and make a motion to suspend the rules, read one time for passage, is that right?
If you're wanting to approve it, it's not, yes.
Mayor, that's my motion, amended motion.
All right, so you are making a, a, a mo, a motion to amend to suspend the rules.
He just needs to make a motion to suspend.
You can just make the motion to suspend.
But it will require a second since it's a suspend, suspension of rule.
Okay. So, second, Mr. Eaton. Everybody, we're voting on the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we're down to the main motion.
I have to read and summarize.
Hit it.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding authorized the city Russellville's agreement with Bunny Electric for an air-conditioning unit installation services at the Russellville Police Station. For the purposes of this ordinance, if passed, would waive the bidding requirement for materials, equipment, or services that are anticipated to be over twenty thousand, which, uh, this particular service and material, which is a, a C unit at the Russellville PD, uh, is expected to be over that amount. And in accordance with the state law, this would declare, uh, the need to be impractical feasible through the formal committee process and would waive that and allow the city to enter a contract with Bunny Electric for the, for said service.
Okay, there were a few questions already at Finance. Does anybody have any questions or need more information?
Move to adopt. Second.
So we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Call the roll.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor, last on our list. Uh, one second. Chief, do we need to do the emergency clause so we can go, go ahead and start work on this? I mean, how does, because tomorrow it's supposed to be eighty, and no, you can't take a late day off, so. Let entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion, Mr. Wiley, second. Mr. Eaton, all in favor of the emergency clause?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Mayor, last on our list was preparation, uh, ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars for the comprehensive master zoning plan that's underway right now. That was passed by the Finance Committee in form of a motion to present to, to the full council.
Okay, council, you heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Chairman Tripp. Chairman Stuber?
Mayor, all the business we had was taken care of in item four and five in the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That'll bring us to unfinished old business. Item one, uh, tabled last month, an ordinance limiting the franchise tax. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Hampshire's. Mayor, I'll move to, uh, address this at this time.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Wiley. Discussion, Mr.?
Yes, I do, I do have a question in regard to this, and I spoke to, uh, city attorney Smith just before this. Uh, I, I think it was in yesterday's, uh, Democrat Gazette where there was, um, some question that was brought up regarding the fact that, uh, internet services could not be taxed in the state due to some legislation this past, uh, session. I would like for us to consider or allow Mr. Smith to review that before we consider, uh, advancing this particular, uh, ordinance at this time.
So he just wants to table it?
No, I'm not.
I, I have since I talked, found what you were talking about, uh, during the mayor's state of the city. And, um, that appears to be something through the, the state, uh, through the state collected through a wireless service, uh, which would not be using a, uh, right-of-way, a public right-of-way, so there could be a difference between the two. But I'd like to look into it some more to see the facts of the situation. But it talks about, uh, I think I've, I think it talks about it being a wireless service that they accidentally collect that they tax on. So with wireless, they don't have, they're not, I don't think they will have any type of lines running through a public right-of-way, and so they shouldn't have collected it. Versus our situation where they do have lines in the right-of-way.
Yes, they do have.
So, but I, that's fine if you wanna take more time.
Well, I just, I just brought that question up because it was not clear to me in the article that I read, but I didn't want us to take action and then have to turn around and rescind that if we didn't have to.
Do you make a motion to table that? Mr. Smith?
I, I just made a motion to consider it. And I guess I would need to amend my motion to indicate that we table it for consideration by city attorney Smith at this time.
I'll second that. Uh, one second. Mr. Smith, because of the issue of tabling two months in a row, and also for the council's consideration, are we better to table this or refer it back to Finance Committee? Because he, who knows how long it's gonna take us to work it out? What, procedurally, what, what would you think would be best?
Well, if the committee's good to do more work or change direction, then, well, if, if there's an issue on doing more work, then the committee needs to, it probably needs to go back to the committee for that. Uh, I, I wasn't under the impression that maybe there was, uh, an issue of just not doing this tax at all uh, based on the discussion from the, uh, agenda meeting, so if that's the case, then, you know, you can take it up tonight.
Mr. Mayor, uh, in, uh, respect to what, uh, attorney Smith was saying, that was not my intention. It was not to, to levy a tax at all, but that to make sure that we had the wording and the so forth related to that.
Okay.
As it would apply for that tax.
Okay, so we have your motion and Mr. Tripp's second to table, is that correct?
I'd like to amend that motion.
Mr. Wiley?
To send it back to the, to the, to the Finance Committee. Amend an amendment? Yes. I, I, I believe it needs to come back to the Finance Committee.
You don't need to make an amendment, he just needs to refer to committee. It takes precedence over amendment. So if the referral is voted in, the amendment is moved.
Okay, so we need a second to Mr. Wiley's motion if we wanna refer it.
That's correct.
Does anybody wanna make a second?
I'll second.
Is that, Mr. Harris, Mr. Harris seconded the motion to refer it back to Finance? Any other discussion? Okay, so we're voting on the motion to refer this back to the Finance Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so referring old business one back to Finance. Uh, unfinished, unfinished business, consideration of an ordinance amending the zoning code for the city of Russellville sidewalks.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to read this by title only for the second of three readings.
Okay. The motion is to suspend the rules and read by title only for the second reading only. We would still have one more reading. Was that a second?
Yes, that was a second.
Okay. Who's second? Mr. Harris did?
Yes.
Okay.
Discussion, Mayor?
Yeah, discussion. Oh wait.
Where, where, where are we at on this now?
First, we gotta vote on the motion to suspend the rules, so all in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Smith, where are we at on this?
Need to read the?
Yeah, we have to read it immediately.
Okay. When do we have discussion on this, Mr. Smith?
Well, there should not be since it's not up for a vote for adoption. Is that, if I understood the suspension correctly, Mr. Tripp, you're asking for just a second reading with no adoption tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, then it's not up for debate at this point in time.
Okay, so we need to read?
So no discussion. I'm not speaking of a debate.
Not till next month.
Well, after, after you read it, we can have discussion, right?
I can answer a question or two on it, but it's not gonna be up for vote tonight.
Okay. We'll just go ahead and I'll make my comments next month and.
There you go.
The ordinance amending the zoning code for the city of Russellville, Arkansas, where it's number six, nineteen sixty-six, for the purposes, this would amend the zoning code, Article Three, Section Three, Subsection Twenty-One, regarding sidewalks, specifically three dot twenty-one dot one dot, excuse me, dot C, uh, as well as changing the, uh, request for, uh, approval on appeal to the Board of Adjustment.
Why, why can we not discuss this?
Cause we're not gonna pass it.
We, we do other, we do other things on second reading and first reading.
That was my question.
Because debate is usually, uh, when you have a motion to pass, but if you wanna talk about it and, and break normal, the procedurals, that's fine.
We can discuss it next month before, before we vote on it.
It'll be up for a vote next month, but if y'all wanna do it, that's fine.
We can let it ride for as I'm concerned, but I was under the impression that we had done this in the past. I guess we've already had discussion as a result of that comment, so.
It needs to be discussed.
So we're gonna discuss or no? Mr. Eaton?
Move right along.
That'll get us to old business three, consideration of a, uh, resolution requiring rehab by agreement for three hundred and a half North Hartford Avenue.
Mayor, I think those people are here.
Okay, need a motion to consider. Motion. Motion, Mr. Harris, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Westcott. Okay, discussion, uh, is there somebody here to speak about this, the rehab on the three hundred and a half North Hartford?
Hello, my name's Linda Cody. I come here before you tonight to plead for my own property, which you seek to condemn. I am a very sick man with a dismal prognosis. I am extremely ill from end-stage renal failure and virtually destitute due to my medical bills. My land and my residence are my only asset and my last resort if I am to get a kidney transplant. If you place a lien upon, I cannot get a loan on the property. If you place a lien upon, I cannot get a loan on the property, and the value of my property will virtually be wiped out. The cost of demolition is, if you, is, it is done by you. Up to this point, you have never told me what needs to be done, and you have failed to provide me with any kind of specifics on what needs, what you want done. Only general vague allegations of violations. Unless you tell me what needs, the minimum amount of work I can do to save it, that is, if I can find someone to do the work and to find some way of paying for it, or get someone to help me take it down. I am overwhelmed by medical bills, and my disability barely covers my day-to-day care and most of my pressing medical bills. Your action tonight will, in essence, take away the only asset I have to show for forty years of hard work. I left my home in, in March of twenty fifteen only to lose my leg to port a medical care, to return, to find the city that I choose to make my home for, since nineteen eighty, now wants to take my home. I have, the, the last few years I have not been able to keep up my home as I would like to, but that was due to illness and lack of funds. Not to any intentions to let it fall into disrepair. The city I have paid taxes to for thirty-five years should be trying to find ways to help me keep my home, not take it away. I can do little now without the help of others, a position you will find yourself in someday. But if you will give me some time, I will try to find out, find some way to help fix it or to remove it as my finances allow. But I am totally at your mercy. You will choose to help me or ruin me. It is your choice. If you'll give me ninety days and spiff it, and specifics to what you want, I will fix it or remove it. Thank you.
Mayor, I make a motion, we give him ninety days.
I'll second.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna volunteer to help him work on this house, cause I know this gentleman.
Can we get some input from Mr. Clark? What would it take to get this to a...
While I can gather, looking through the windows and the exterior of this property, the foundation has been compromised, uh, the ceilings inside have fallen in, uh, so there's gonna be some potential exterior work and foundation work to get this rid of. Uh, I've been aboard here five years and I've not had some of that house locked back in that house. That's been five years. That's not really the main market. I've been there.
And then you said now, then there is...
I've been there too. Well, we watch, so, but here, that's not, that's not true.
Okay, that's, that's, let's, let's hold on here. So is there something they could do in the meantime to protect their neighbors, who are the ones that are really...
A little lack of, lack of, they just crap everywhere and they're so much drunk around a little bit and they're bored up.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Wiley?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so we've got your motion to table it. You're gonna work with him to get it cleaned up.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris seconded?
Well, I thought he said ninety days.
Yeah, ninety days.
Ninety days.
What did I say?
He said table.
Yeah, for ninety days, give him ninety days.
May, may I?
Mr. Eaton?
I'm not clear on what the motion is, that it, that it gets it to a livable stage within ninety days or, or what?
It either gets to where he can live in it or he'll, or we'll have to have him tear it down. Cause he just said, that if we give him ninety days, he'd either get it livable or he would tear it down.
And it needs to come off the agenda because you can't postpone it in ninety days. You can only postpone till the next meeting, so it's easier to, the proper thing would take it off and put it back on in ninety days. If that accomplished what Mr. Riley's wanting.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Okay, so you wanna restate the...
Yes.
We're gonna take it off the agenda?
Just amend, his amendment is to take it off the agenda.
Okay.
Cause there's been a motion to adopt.
Just, just so I can be clear, uh, if the house is, uh, in condition that Bill indicated, there may not be an opportunity to get it livable in ninety days. Is it acceptable to get the yard cleaned up?
Yes.
And then boarded up? Would that meet the city's codes and requirements at that time, so we wouldn't have to demolish the house?
Then, when we board it up, it was done in a, uh, house that is not dilapidated. In my opinion, and Mr. Paul's opinion, this house is in dilapidated state. It has foundation problems, it has issues with siding that's been deteriorating, coming off of the wall. Ceilings are coming down inside. Uh, so...
Remember the pictures, Mr.?
Just because we board it up, it's still a, a leave, a leave, a leave, a leave from being dilapidated. Dilapidated structure, we either repair it, demolish it, or repair it, we're in a rehab ring to, to provide those repairs.
May I ask a question real quick? Has the homeowner been advised of any options that he has to take care of this? I, I'm seeing here that he received what appears to be a certified letter, a notice of violation, one hundred and eighteen days ago. In that one hundred and eighteen days, has he contacted your office, asked for any kind of remedy that he's able to do to resolve this?
I received one letter from Mr. Paul Slayton, uh, and in that, basically just played it forward. Not doing anything, but, you know, there's nothing been done to this property other than taking it up around the front of it since I started this process and that kind of shit.
So I, I'd like to address this question to the homeowner. If he can hear what I'm saying. Okay, what I'm asking you is, you received and signed for this letter one hundred and eighteen days ago. No, you, oh, okay, okay, I'm looking at it right here, it's got your signature on it, dated October twenty-third of twenty fifteen.
Mr. Paul, I'm just, oh, sorry.
Okay, well, someone who has the ability to sign on his behalf received a certified letter one hundred and eighteen days ago. So my question is, what do you propose, concrete, definite, to do in the next ninety days that you've been unable to even attempt in the last one hundred and eighteen days?
Mr. Yobody, that doesn't, he was nursing home, he was funding a battle to get his Medicaid, he was funding a battle for his life, his health, there was nothing that I could do for it except try to get the building inspector to delay it physically, to make a parent, and make a judgment for himself.
My question still remains, what, what definite tangible difference do you plan to make in this building in the next ninety days?
Mr. Yobody's finances will improve somewhat if he files statements, and he will be able to have some money to devote to this work, that he won't be able to, 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 to barely even live.
I would be very much surprised if your plans come to pass and give you the ability to put as much income into this building as it requires. I would be shocked, to be honest with you.
Any other discussion, council? Well, I'd just like to say, this council just voted to provide the employee of the city the benefit of the doubt for thirteen years back pay. I think this council can afford to give a citizen of Russell the benefit of the doubt in relation to his home at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Gaby.
Okay, so we have an amendment. We had a, we had a motion.
To approve.
Now the amendment is to...
Ninety days? To remove it and have the clerk put it back on ninety days from now.
Okay, and we got a second on that, was it?
It's our second.
Okay. Any other discussion? We're voting on Mr. Wiley's motion to remove it from the agenda and have the clerk track it and put it back on ninety days. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
We better call the roll, ma'am, burden.
Is Mr. Wiley, Ms. Harris, no?
Correct.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Eaton?
No.
Mr. Richard Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Boarded?
Mr. Stuber?
Uh, Mr. Stuber?
No.
Time.
Mayor, you got another one?
Lord, y'all don't pay...
That's why we pay you the big bucks for.
Yeah, let me know when that starts.
Mayor, I'm gonna volunteer my labor.
Mr. Wiley, I'm gonna take you up on that offer.
Thank you.
I'm voting in your favor.
I'll see y'all after the meeting.
We have to do another vote now, the motion's amended.
So we got another motion?
We got now put on the amended, motion to adopt, which is now amended to removing it.
Okay, so now we have to vote on the main motion again?
Yeah.
So, shall we call the roll?
What was the main motion?
The amendment, the amendment was, what we just voted on was your amendment.
Yes.
To remove it. So now we have to vote because, because we had a motion already, only mainly.
Oh, this motion?
Yeah, just to clean it up, I guess, let's go through it again. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure what I'm about to vote on here, so please clarify for me.
I'm, I'm confused.
Mr. Parliamentarian, explain it, will you, cause he hears.
Y'all voted to see whether the amendment would pass. That amendment was to change the motion to adopt. It's now been changed now to remove, uh, from the agenda for ninety days. So basically, if you voted for the amendment, you will vote for the main motion. If you voted against it, you'll probably wanna vote against it again.
So a yes a moment ago was still a yes?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Sorry, Roberts, rules are fine.
And that was...
Let's call the roll.
Mr. Harris and Mr. Westcott was the main motion. Is that correct?
To do what?
To adopt the original, to adopt the original resolution as is.
Correct.
Okay.
Which is now amended, so...
Which is now been changed.
Mr. Richard Harris?
I, I think I'm supposed to vote yes.
Mr. Westcott?
I, I'm with him, I'm not sure what I'm voting for.
You're voting the same thing you just voted on, it's just now the main motion instead of the amendment.
Okay, no.
Okay, so whatever you just voted, you probably wanna do it again.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
No.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
No.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Imagine that.
Imagine that, Mayor.
And once again, I'm gonna support the any endeavor that gets Mr. Wiley off the golf course and into the work course.
Oh, my goodness!
So, I vote yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item five, uh, consideration of an ordinance to establish participation in the wrecker ordinance.
Oh, you skipped number four.
I thought we did four.
No.
Oh, no, yeah, four, ordinance amending ordinance twenty-twenty-three, procedures for downtown historic district.
Mayor, I make a motion, we suspend the rule of revitalizing only for the first time with short explanation.
Okay, we've got a motion to suspend, one for all three readings or just for...
For first reading?
For first reading only.
Yes, sir.
Got a second, Mr. Westcott? So you're voting on the motion to suspend for the first reading only, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-twenty-three, which established procedures for protection and preservation of the character of and of properties of the Russell Downtown Historic District, repealing ordinance number twenty-fourty-eight. For other purposes, this ordinance passed would, uh, change the, uh, sum of the provisions in ordinance number twenty-twenty-three regarding the time of notice prior to the hearing as well as, uh, change the number of commissioners and also outline, uh, any deviations in the COA, uh, by the developer applicant.
So that's the first reading, we bring it back next month, we bring it back the next month. Mr. Harris conducted a meeting last week, week before, a group meeting. Mr. Smith, Ms., uh, Ms. Alfred Hodges and I met this week. There's been several revisions to this ordinance. May I suggest that in the meantime, we get everybody the cleaned-up version, what's in and what's out and what we're doing, and, uh, maybe visit about this. Typically, on our agenda prep night, we don't process, it's just to set the agenda, but if the district wants to, let's have some more conversation, uh, on agenda prep night in March, fair enough. Item five, consideration of an ordinance to establish participation in the Russell Wrecker Call Service.
Make a motion, we ought to spend the rule of revitalizing only with short explanation for the second reading only.
Second reading only. I'll second that. We have a second, so we're voting on the motion to suspend for the second reading only, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Smith?
An ordinance to establish participation in the city Russell Wrecker Call Service, repealing ordinance numbers eighteen fifty-three and eighteen ninety, and for other purposes, this ordinance passed would, uh, pass a new wrecker call service ordinance, uh, for the city, uh, would repeal the old ones that are currently in place as ordinance numbers fifteen, excuse me, eighteen fifty-three and eighteen ninety sets out the definitions and establishes a rotation list, uh, sets out participation requirements, uh, pricing, and the wrecker service responsibilities.
All right, that's the second reading. That brings us to...
Mayor, just out of curiosity, what, what good does it do to read these things three times if you aren't going to discuss them but once?
Will?
You know, you know, we, we've discussed, you know, you know, we discussed this particular ordinance, or, or ordinance at last month's meeting, we discussed this particular ordinance. And, and, and I think it's, uh, there's been a precedent set on, on discussing these ordinances on, on, on the first and second reading also, not just the final ordinance.
Mr. Smith, you had a...
Under, uh, rules, if you're not gonna have anything up for, uh, adoption, then debate is not warranted, because if you're gonna debate it before you even go into adopt it, then, uh, you're going to continually either change the ordinance thereby making first, reset it to a first reading, uh, you have to read the ordinance three times on three different days before it's ready for approval, uh, under the state law.
But we aren't trying to approve it by discussing it tonight.
Right, but if you begin to debate it and then change it, then you will reset the, back to, uh, a new reading.
Back to first reading.
So, so next month, if... So, so next month, if, if we choose to make changes, we're gonna have to start over?
Yes.
Okay.
Or suspend the rules and adopt the revision.
Uh-huh.
Or suspend the rules and adopt the revision.
Right, you could always adopt it tonight and then, and then make the changes, make a de- and have a debate if you're going to adopt it tonight. Uh, you could also approach, uh, the police department and discuss with them any issues you have with it.
Chief, has anybody been down there to talk to you about this issue? That you know of?
Well, the record, record captain?
No, any of the council members?
I've had a few, you know.
We've had a few and I, and I, and we've discussed it, I, I've answered most of the questions.
To their satisfaction or yours?
I think both.
Okay, thank you.
For, for, for those of you that have not been on the council very long, I was sitting back there thinking about this and, and kind of put it in perspective. We answer about seven hundred alarm calls a year that we're dispatched to, and we have an ordinance that regulates how we do that because after four, you know, we send a, 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 a fine. We en- we have about seventy-five special events each year that were, that we, uh, participate in, and we passed an ordinance last year that rev- revised the ordinance from the mid-seventies. We dispatch about six hundred wreckers a year, we, we call the dispatch center and request about six hundred year, uh, six hundred wreckers a year for the police department's purpose only. And the ordinance that regulates that is eleven years old. So, we, we've adopted, or we've written a new ordinance that brings us up with the current law, and we've also included to you guys the, uh, a spreadsheet on fees, what the current record companies are charging. Because the council has not addressed the fee part of this since two thousand and five. And, and the council set the fees in two thousand and five, but for the past ten years, the record companies have been charging what they've wanted to charge, and this ordinance has not been enforced. And it's, it's the council's pleasure to do what they want to with this ordinance, but, you know, we need something operationally that, that we can use for our day-to-day activities out on the street, so.
Yes.
Okay, is there any other non-discussion on that? New business one.
Uh. Did we, uh, did we vote on this one? No.
It was the second reading.
Second reading.
Ordinance of, uh, consideration of an ordinance to amend ordinance two-two-two-two, ridder communications franchise fee.
I thought we had just done this one.
Mayor, that was it on there from the agenda meeting because of old business number one possibly being taken off, and this needed to be revised because their current ordinance reflects the change. So, becau- because of what we did on.
The other.
Old business number one, this one either needs to be removed or referred or tabled. Make a motion to refer it back to the finance committee. Second. So, we got a motion, Mr. Harris, is that second, Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Motion and a second to refer to, back to finance committee for further grinding, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I think so.
Okay, so, Mr. Eaton is a no. Okay. New business two, consideration of an ordinance to rezon properties C two to R three, North Elmira, planning commission unanimously recommended, do I hear a motion on that?
Make the motion, we suspend the rule of re-vitalizing only with short explanation.
You're suspended for all three readings.
All three readings.
Ma- okay.
I'll second that. Okay, we got a motion and a second to suspend the rules for all three readings, discussion, Mr. Eaton?
Are we talking about two A and B or two A without B or is how we gonna deal with that, the way that's written up?
B is, is resolution, uh, two A is an ordinance.
Well, I, I can read that.
Okay, listen, let's take one at a time.
But, uh, what is the area involved for B?
Is that the deal they ruined?
You know, I, I, I think we've got two, two different things mixed up here.
No, there, item B is a.
What we got mixed up is we didn't, uh, I didn't, wasn't able to read the summary of the ordinance first before we jumped into approval.
Yeah.
So.
Let's do A, we've got a motion to suspend. Have we voted on that one yet?
No.
First, let's take care of that, are we gonna suspend the rules for the three readings? All in favor say aye? Discussion, please. On the ordinance, before we vote, do I not get a discussion?
We've been suspended the rules.
We have to vote to suspend the rules first. Okay. Okay, so, suspend the rules for the three readings, read by title only, all in favor of that motion? Better call the roll. Guess we have to again.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Harris?
No.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance rezoned certain really city Russell, Arkansas, the purpose this ordinance has passed to rezon property to R three that is currently C two as further described in the attachment labeled exhibit A.
Make a motion to adopt.
Okay, let's have some discussion on that.
Okay.
Mr. Harris? Okay, so, basically, I'm looking at the zoning around that area. I note that it's C two back in the property back behind, but we're gonna make this R three, I just don't think it's appropriate, I know the planning commission has approved it, but I just don't think when you look at that area and the business around there to go in and stick some apartments, I don't think it's the appropriate thing to do, so. Any other discussion?
Well, I'd like to say that the planning board's got a job just like we've got, and I, most of the time, ninety percent of the time, I do not vote against the planning commission because they've got a job to do, same as we've got to do. They've studied this just like we've studied it.
Anybody else want to be in?
We're still talking about two A only.
We're on two A, yeah. For rezoning, B is a piggyback deal, that's, this is one of those tax credit deals and if you vote to do A, then you need to do B, it's a resolution they require saying it. It's a plan of action for economic development to get these tax credits.
Well, I guess I'm confused, but I don't see the documentation supporting B as what I'm getting at, or I'm totally missing it.
Mr., so, Smith said there wasn't any, I think.
There's a resolution, that's all that's the documentation.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Resolution is after the, what would you call it, salmon color? If it's a colored salmon, salmon is just.
This one right here, a resolution approving a plan of action for economic development, revitalization of the city Russell, Arkansas for other purposes.
If you're looking at new business number two. R three.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I didn't find it at first either.
Very good, I've looked at it half a dozen times and didn't see it. I'm good with it, sorry, Mayor.
It's all right, sir.
Overlooked that a number of times.
Better to do it now than have it fast.
I'm like Mr. Wiley on what this was, I supported them as far as the, the ordinance relative to changing this, so.
Okay.
Make the motion.
We've got a motion to adopt on two A.
And I'll address two B after we do something with this.
Can you hit a second?
Mr. Westcott, second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Harris?
No.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, I'll make the motion to adopt B.
Before we go there, they've asked for the emergency clause, the application has to be in by March one, is that correct? Is this yours, Mr. Garza, yeah?
All right, I'll make that motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the emergency clause?
Second.
Second, Mr. Eaton, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Harris?
No.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I don't get to vote?
Now, I make a motion, we approve B.
All right, we got a motion on the resolution, item B.
Move to approve.
I'll second that, we need a second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Westcott? All right, all in favor of the resolution, uh, item two B, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item three, consideration of resolution set a public hearing to vacate unused portion of right-of-way. Planning commission, uh, unanimously recommended.
Move to consider the, the hearing.
Okay, just sets the hearing for next month, darn it, that's all we get, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do a public hearing next month and then we. Finish her up, okay. Is that on four now?
You're on four now.
Special use permit to operate a construction office building in C two, this is a resolution.
Move to, um, approve.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second, is that Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item five, considering a resolution requiring rehab by agreement, three-ten East E Street.
Which one is that? Move that, uh, we require a rehabilitation agreement or, uh, as the item identifies here, provide for a lien on the property to recover the cause.
Second.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second, discussion? Mr. Holstein, come on.
This property is in a, a flood area, flood, floodway, exactly.
Floodway?
Floodway.
Okay.
Uh, by ordinance, we've adopted FEMA floodway and, uh, the build, the structure, I believe, is gonna be greater than fifty percent, and, uh, my recommendation is that it come down and not rehab.
If it is in the floodway, that would be the deciding factor, would it not, uh, Mr. Holstein?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
So, this is for the garage portion only?
Yeah.
Mr. Frank House?
Yes, uh, we just bought a house in front and the garage apartment behind it just about a, little over a month ago. We're almost completely done rehabbing the, the house in the front which was posted by the city. We'd like to, to the garage apartment back behind, I've talked with Dave Garza, and he says as long as it's existing property, you know, it's existing, even though the, the, the one corner is in the floodway, he said that should not play any factor into rehabbing the building because it is an existing property. We're not doing any building in the floodway, it's just the rehabbing of the structure itself.
Okay, Mr. Holstein, did I hear you say if it's over fifty percent, that's?
He needs to speak to our floodplain's administrator, not Mr. Garza, our floodplain's administrator who enforces the requirements of the floodplain and floodway.
I did talk to Ben Gray, and Ben Gray agreed with me that as long as it wasn't new construction inside the floodway, that it was perfectly fine to rehab that building in that, in that area.
But if I understand Mr. Holstein correctly, if you're doing more than fifty percent repairs, remodels or whatever on that building, even though it's already there, it's considered new construction, Mr. Holstein? Or treated the same as?
We had Brian May, Mahan do an after-repair value appraisal on the property, it came in at thirty-three thousand dollars. We had our contractors who we used, Dave Pounders for plumbing, Daniel Coleman for electrical, Mark Granger for, for framing and drywall, and our bids came in at less than twenty-five percent of the after-repair value appraisal on the property itself.
That's after appraisal, that's after he has restored this building, they're saying it's gonna be thirty-three thousand dollars. This building today is not worth thirty-three thousand dollars, that's after they've restored the building. I guess their appraiser could say restored it to fifty thousand dollars, and he could have twenty-five thousand dollars at fifty percent.
The appraisal was done on comps of other structures in the area, and I have a full appraisal done by Brian Mahan, this is, that's what it would be, and that's what FEMA requirements are, less than fifty percent of cost to bring the project, product, the building up to the after-repair value on the, on the building itself.
Mayor, what does the, the appraised value have anything to do with whether or not to take action on this? The value has nothing.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with it.
I don't see where that, Mr. Holstein, I don't see where that.
Yeah, if it's in the floodplain.
Your comment about it only being thirty, I don't see where that plays merit into this discussion.
No.
I really.
May I, may I amend my original, uh?
Let's, let's get an answer and then do, go ahead.
I really think the appropriate thing to do would be to discuss this with our FEMA, uh, floodplain's administrator, because I think that someone has gotten the specifics wrong as far as it's, it's the value of the building as is. Mr. Jones, can you chime in on this?
Hold, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, no, it hasn't changed my opinion, I, I guess.
You wanna make the amendment to your motion, you say?
No, I'd really like to say a lot of different things about why we constantly have things like this related to this particular property owner. Uh, it really bugs me that we have to deal like this repeatedly, Mr. Frank House. Um, this has gone on, uh, for I don't know how long, and it's always some kind of, uh, I don't know, marginal is not even a good word to use, but, uh, that's gonna be my statement about it, but I'll turn it to Mr. Jones.
I'm, I'm just, I, I don't know a whole lot about the specifics of this situation, I have not discussed it with Ben Gray. I will say that the whole, you know, the whole purpose of our floodplain ordinance and floodplain development ordinance and the restrictions in the building in the floodway and is to, uh, you know, well, bottom line is, there is no new construction allowed. The, the whole issue of, of at what point it triggers or, or treats the property as new construction is you don't want people investing a lot of money in the floodway. Uh, you know, and that's because, you know, the goal, the ultimate goal is we want these structures out of the floodway, so when a structure becomes dilapidated, uh, to a certain point, we, we don't want a property owner going in and investing a lot of money into the structure so that it's gonna be there for a. and investing a lot of money into the structure so that it's going to be there for a longer period of time. You know, our, our preference would be that we don't have the structure in the floodway. So, you know, that's where the appraised value and, and the value of the property and what, you know, what this property owner is wanting to invest in the property comes into play. You know, at some point in, in, I guess if I'm understanding Mr. Holstein correctly, it, you know, when, when the cost of the repair exceeds fifty percent of the repaired value of the structure, it, you know, it's, it's treated as new construction, and that's, I'm assuming, our, our, our building code policy or, or rule. But, you know, from our standpoint, from the public work standpoint, I mean, we're, you know, we're tasked with, with monitoring development of the floodway and protecting that floodway because it jeopardizes the citywide ability to, you know, to be able to get flood insurance. And FEMA, trust me, FEMA, FEMA knows every structure that we've got in town that's in that floodway right now that's in violation of our floodplain ordinance, and that's what, you know, that's what we're trying to protect at this point.
Mr. Mayor, if I may at this time, I was unaware that this was in the floodway itself, and that puts a whole new light on this item as it is. And I would like to amend my motion to indicate that, that the property owner be given the opportunity to tear this down, or that the city take action to remove this.
I'm going to second that.
You know, I think this is a little harsh on this, FEMA requirements, this building was not in the floodway when it was originally built, okay? FEMA requirements are within fifty percent of after-repair value, appraised value of the property, okay? And it does not affect insurance whatsoever, okay? Now, as far as the building you keep calling me on, it had the thing in the, in the newspaper on, the one on Arkansas, I would have rather have rebuilt that building, but when Brian told me it's going to be too expensive to rebuild the building, and they hit me with, I'm going to need five thousand dollars for the architectural drawings of the existing structure inside, even to do anything? Yeah, no, I backed off from it, okay? But I've rehabbed dozens of properties in this city, I've rehabbed over a hundred and thirty properties, which I own, every one of them, okay? They're almost like my children, I put a lot into these, these buildings. And I know you like to cite things like citations on buildings, but most everything, almost ninety-nine percent are things like somebody put a couch by a trash can out front in their yard, somebody doesn't mow their grass, okay? These are tenant problems, it's not caused by me, okay? We try to keep our stuff in its best possible condition as possible, okay? And I've never run into problems with that, I mean, I mean, I think I've appro, I, I have provided a lot of affordable housing in this town, a lot of good structures, okay, as well as in Yale County and the rest of Pope County. So, I mean, I think the, because you don't like me, okay? You are, you are, you're acting this way, I don't, I don't think it's fair, I really don't.
Mayor, Mayor, may I?
Let me say something, Mr. Frank.
I believe we've said enough.
Mr. Frankhouse, may I respond to that? I have nothing against you personally, but I disagree, and I have a different opinion about what you have provided, and that is why I make that decision, and I call for the question.
Second, very well, discussion is ended.
Well, we'll, we have to vote on that call because I have a question to ask.
Okay, motion to call the question, and we have a second by-
Me.
Mr. Harris.
Oh, okay.
So, we need to vote on the motion to call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Call the roll, make sure there's not- Call the roll.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
We're voting on the question to the question. Yep, and it takes two-thirds. Does this allow to vote yes, it means Mr. Tripp cannot ask his question?
That's correct, to vote no-
Says he can.
No.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
No.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, now we vote on the motion.
What is the motion?
You've raised your motion, Mr. Eaton?
Yes, the motion that I made was to allow the property owner to remove this dilapidated structure, or if that does not occur, that the city remove it and place a lien on the property if need be.
Now, you're talking about the garage structure only?
I'm talking about the garage structure, which is the one that we're talking about here in this. That is my motion.
Discussion, well, we're through discussing, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, okay, call the roll.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Harris?
No.
Mr. Tripp?
No.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to new business six, Mr. Wiley?
Mayor?
You attending to the table?
I want to table this till next month.
Here's a second.
Second.
All in favor of tabling new business six, say aye.
Aye.
Item seven, Mr. Tripp, you want to table this?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until our March meeting.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Let's see, I guess we're missing one final motion, Mr. Wiley.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you all.